All right, good evening. We'll call tonight's meeting to order at 6 o'clock. And please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll begin, as we always do, with public audience. And I'll just ask people to limit their remarks to five minutes. Yes.
Mr. Callishman.
Mr. Callishman.
I've been watching a lot of television. I don't go much anymore. I confine myself. And I noticed two or three things, hello, at the hearing. And also proceedings here when there was a question as to whether or not a party should be reclusive. And I just want to remind you. The situation is that that when a party recluses himself from a vote or a coming vote, and then he decides that he's going to give testimony, that's a no-no. And that's not coming from Bob Callishman. That's coming from your ordinances. That when you reclude yourself, you're done. And the incident I'm speaking of is the where we're having a problem, and Mr. Roy addressed the the public regarding the trash removal. And Mr. Payne recludes himself. And then he said, well, because I'm in the business and I have a lot of experience, I'm going to give you testimony. And he stood alongside Mr. Roy, and he gave testimony. And in my opinion, he could very well have influenced the vote if there were going to be a vote. That's a no-no. You can't do that. And then the other thing that's come to my attention is, and I want you to know that I went to every meeting of the Charter Revision Committee and when they adopted this new charter. Went to every meeting. And a lot of decisions were made that I didn't agree with. But when it was said and done, it was done. I didn't agree with the political attachment to searching for personnel. I didn't agree with it. But I figured, well, maybe it will correct itself. And eventually it will. And the thing I'm referring to is we had a big discussion regarding personnel. And the personnel was always handled by the first selectmen. And at the time, the discussion included Mary Glassman, who was the first selectwoman. And it was regarding some incident with personnel. And there was a little discussion on it. And the outcome of that was that the first selectman was in charge of personnel. And then, when we brought in the new charter, the person that's in charge of personnel is the town manager. There's no question about it. And we have commissions that, for some reason or other, they feel they're more important than the public. And they come and they decide who the personnel is going to be. And I think you have something that's either going to come before you or has come before you regarding what's going on in the police commission. That's no. The person in charge of personnel is the town manager, not the commission. The commission may recommend, but they can't go above the town manager and go right to the board of selectmen. They have to go to the town manager. She's in charge of personnel. Unless you're going to change it. And even if you decide to change it, in my opinion, you can't change it because this was done by the public. The public voted on it. And the charter's here, and I'll read it if you like. But I don't think it's necessary for me to read it. You're all aware of it. And you know, there's certain things that are coming up. And I'm saying to myself, what are we going on here?
Mr. Callishman.
You're running the town. Not the commissions. Their job is they come in, they can recommend. But it's the town manager that's running the personnel.
That's five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I seriously hope that you'll consider this and you don't go all on a tangent.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak tonight? Dr. Rinaldi.
Mike Rinaldi. My name is Mike Rinaldi. I live at Pinnacle Mountain Road. I'm not going to take much of your time up. But we're starting the beginning of the season of the Performing Arts Center. There are two problems. One is disability parking. There's not enough of it. However, by state statute, there is enough of it in the paid parking area. When the PAC was taken over by the 501(c), that area was free parking for the disabled. However, they decided to make it all for paid parking, and they opened up a larger area. So by state statute, the PAC is within the correct statute of the state. But the problem is there's still not enough disability parking. But then the second point is that all the disabled people have to pay. People who are not disabled have a right not to pay. They can park someplace else. So it's kind of unfair. When the Performing Arts Center was built, it was built by basically public and private donations. And the town, when they ran it, they designated the area on the back of the center for the disabled. I've heard personally, some of the volunteers who collect tickets for parking, make comments like the people in those cars are not disabled. People in those cars, they, these volunteers have no right to say that. How do they know who's disabled or not? I mean, you could have a guy with one leg with a prosthesis. And he's not really that disabled. He can get around pretty good. Somebody with arterioscotic heart disease or peripheral vascular disease or severe emphysema or digestive heart failure can't walk more than 50 feet or 75 feet. He's disabled. And if your family takes a disabled person to that venue, you have to help them. So the car is, has the sticker and has to be renewed every year. And they're pretty stringent. So the volunteers shouldn't make comments like the people in those cars are not disabled. Number one. Number two is there has to be some equity here. Either we make the whole place free or we have to mark off some free area for the disabled. Now, I discussed this with the Aging and Disability Conference, and they recognized the problem. However, this has been over six months. I've heard nothing. And the season is coming up. And I'll give you one episode that was extremely frustrating for me. I happened to be at the Beach Boys Conference. That was a day where they predicted rain around 9 o'clock. So they cut out the intermission and played right straight through and had the fireworks right after that. Well, the problem was they ran out of parking because a lot of the people went to the Beach Boys Concerts in my age group. And a lot were more disabled there than normal. So that by an hour before the concert started, I guess it was a little quarter after 6:00, all the parking on the back was closed. There was no more disabled parking. There was no more paid parking. It's closed. However, the police department said, if you're disabled, we'll give you a sticker. And then you can drive yourself up there and get yourself up. If you're the disabled person driving the car, you can't, you can't use the sticker. You can't leave your car there. You have to bring it back. Somebody has to bring it. But even then, the people who were being transported, they had two golf carts. You can't, when the sky broke out with rain, pouring rain, I was sitting around a couple of people who had severe disabilities. They were stuck. They couldn't go anyplace. They just got drenched. But the thing is that there has to be some kind of a compromise where we can get disability parking in the area that the PAC does not run. I don't know how you're going to do it or whether it can be done. But I think disabled people will need a break. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. At the February 10th, 2020, Board Selectment Meeting, First Selectman Eric Wellman prefaced the public audience section stating that everyone is allotted five minutes for comments. However, when Diane Nash was addressing her comments, First Selectman Eric Wellman allowed it to continue for 6 minutes and 3 seconds. It appears that all people are created equal, but some people are more equal than others. Being a political operative allows these special accommodations to persist. I would like to report that I have not received all my Freedom of Information requests from the Town Manager Maria Caprioli. Town Attorney Bob DiCosenzo contacted me to resolve the violations through the review of my requests. To date, I have not heard from him. I recently received the financial statement that Taryn Schreger received from the town as a result of her grievance. Taryn Schreger was employed as a recreation supervisor and received notice on June 13th, 2019 that a position with the town will be eliminated on July 5th, 2019. The grievance filed on June 19th, 2019 is questioning, quote, whether the town intends to fractional, a fraction bargaining work unit in a manner that violates the contract and more generally, whether the town is permitted to eliminate the grievance position, end quote. The second grievance was filed on June 25th, 2019 stating, quote, that the grievance was discriminated against on the base of our sex, specifically because of pregnancy, childbirth, and/or related to medical conditions such as expressing milk at work in violation of Connecticut's Article 16 and Pregnancy Discrimination Act of 1978, a federal law and Connecticut's Act concerning pregnant women in the workplace, end quote. Taryn Schreger received a settlement of $13,725 from the town. Another pending lawsuit is dismissal of Gertrude Ducey from the library after 14 years employment for tardiness through computer data while on medical leave. This lawsuit was filed with her commission on human rights and opportunities. Town Manager Maria Caprioli has not fulfilled my request for the letter from the Commission of Human Rights and Opportunities and the town's response for the information. The pending grievance from Robin Newton, Deputy Town Planner, on the unlawful dismissal by Town Manager Maria Caprioli will be heard shortly with the Labor Board returning Robin Newton to her position of Deputy Town Planner. The unappropriated expenses for the Town Labor Attorney from 2019 through January 2020 is over $100,000 and will continue to increase with all the future Labor Board hearings. The abuse of power of Town Manager Maria Caprioli will continue until the town employees vote no confidence in Town Manager Maria Caprioli. And the Board of Selectmen admit that the town is not being served in the best interest of the taxpayers. There have been several rumors in the police department that Chief Bolter wishes that all officers transferring from other towns would leave or go someplace else, although they bring with them institutional knowledge that is very valuable. It is rumored that the transferred police officers feel that Chief Bolter is the worst manager they have worked for and coming to Simsbury under his leadership, of Chief Bolter, was a mistake. It would appear that this is one of the reasons for the 80% no confidence vote in Chief Bolter. A recent Simsbury police officer, Corey Thomas, transferred from New Britain, knowing that Chief Bolter was difficult to work with and that Chief Bolter has a bias against transferred police officers. Although Chief Bolter stated that Corey Thomas was a, quote, "good fit for the department," quote, Corey Thomas, the first black police officer, only lasted two months and abruptly left the department to return to New Britain. The police department has been plagued with internal affairs investigations, several of which I've requested in the Freedom of Information Act, have not received them. There was a police labor board hearing on February 13th, 2020, which was continued on March 6th, 2020. Chief Bolter will testify under oath during the hearings, as will other members of the police department that were subpoenaed, and to testify under oath. Since Chief Bolter has stated that truthfulness is the most important in police work, if anyone is found to have lied under oath, they should be, this should be just cause for dismissal. Recently, the police commission asked for a fact-finding review of the laws governing police commissions responsibility. There has been no action taken to date. The police department is working with a skeletal staff with dispatchers with excessive overtime and flex hours. Police officers are called in for lunch breaks, but the police officers cannot monitor 9/11 calls due to lack of certification. All 9/11 calls have to be routed to CMed, which is a fee-based company. A solution to the skeletal staff would be to merge with the fire department dispatchers that would need little training to provide services in the dispatch area. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and news feed on Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. I want, anybody else, sir, public audience tonight? I'm sorry. Okay. I want to see if there'd be support to amend the agenda to add an executive session to discuss the Officer Trombley arbitration.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. I also wanted to see if there'd be support to amend the agenda to begin with the discussion of MIRA, the MIRA Statement of Interest. Tom Roy had a previous commitment, and I want to see if we could bring this higher up on the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
I'm abstaining from that.
You abstain, and Mike abstained from that vote. So before, yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to go down there and make a statement.
Yeah. Sure.
I wanted to start out by asking the board if they had any questions relevant to our last board meeting. And if you don't, throw Tom to the wolves and leave him on his own. I'm sure he'll be fine. Ask that question. Otherwise, I'll reach you.
No, Mike, but thank you for your input last week. It's a good perspective, and I appreciate it. Whether conform or not.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
So at our last meeting, we heard a presentation from Tom Roy, which is available to SCTV if you're only tuning in for this meeting. But basically, MIRA was asking us two questions. They need to replace an aging facility. And the first question is around whether the town would accept a $145 per ton tip fee, which is significantly higher than they charge today. And the second is whether the town would sign up for a 30-year commitment without an opt-out clause. So those are the two things we're going to discuss tonight, as well as a letter that Tom wrote that encapsulates the discussion that we had last week. So let me turn it over to Tom.
Thank you so much, Eric. In addition, we had sent MIRA a couple of questions last week. They just got us an email response back today. And that's what I just handed out to all of you. And since we met two weeks ago, a House bill has been introduced at the legislature which would allow for or provide $330 million in bonding to MIRA. And so the question to MIRA, the first question was, what would the impact of that House bill, if that goes through and was signed by the governor, do to the $145 a ton and the other work associated with redevelopment? The long and the short answer is the $145 a ton would go down. In the email response in front of you, the MIRA Executive Director did not give an exact figure, but he relayed it back to competitive fees similar to what they paid last year when they had to ship trash out of state, which is in the range of $105 and $110 per ton. So it would greatly reduce that fee, close to, but not quite at current market rate. The second thing would be, just wanted to clarify in their Statement of Interest, if we said no, or if we did not respond to their Statement of Interest, would we lose our ability to still participate in the final decision, which is anticipated to come this coming June? And the answer was no. If we choose to vote tonight and give them a response to the Statement of Interest, they're going to use that to help formulate their plan to get a better understanding of what communities like Simsbury want to do. But we would not be losing our opportunity to participate in the rest of the process. Also, I can tell you, subsequent to our meeting, I've met with some of my counterparts from some of our surrounding towns. They are all looking at this issue closely. They had actually asked that I share this letter with them, and I did do that. They're looking to do a very similar approach to what we've talked about, which is however we decide to vote on the Statement of Interest, send an accompanying letter that says, these are our concerns. And finally, they were looking to see if there was a true drop-dead date on our response. So if there was a decision not to vote tonight, could we vote at a later date? Again, MIRA was quite honest, and they said they were expecting about 50% return on these. They did make it clear that if we were even considering, and they used the word might, that they would rather have us provide them some information than not provide them information because they want to formulate a final solution, which is going to be the most beneficial or the most widely acceptable.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom, questions, please. Thank you. So the, whatever the, this is for the public as well, it comes to this, what's the term? Tip?
Tip fee.
Right, thank you. So the state bonds for the building of the facility. Then the cost that we are paying for the tip fee, that is just for the operational costs of the facility from the go-forward point, correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay. So, and I forget, where was the cost or how were the costs born prior? And in the old, February 10th slide?
It's a two-stage answer. About 30 or so years ago, 70 towns in Connecticut got together and formulated the Mid-Connecticut Project. That project had a 25-year life and ended a little over a decade, decade and a half ago. Since then, MIRA has continued to operate on a net cost of operation basis. So every year in February, their board gets together and says, okay, for this upcoming year, this is what our costs are going to be. This is what we need to set the tip fee at to keep our operation running.
Okay.
And that has steadily been climbing.
Okay. So maybe it wasn't clear, or maybe I'm just really slow today. But the, so the $145 was the operational cost plus the construction?
Exactly right.
Okay. So $45 is buried in the $330 bonding potentially, okay? Right, you've got $100. Was there any discussion at all when the Bill 54 was put together? Because Bill 54 just goes forth and essentially addresses the replacement of, it becomes MIRA 2.0. You know, we've got, we don't even have a MIRA 1.0 because it's broken.
Yep.
And half of it's operating, so that's maybe 0.05. But the, so that's really just replacing at the bare minimum. Do you know, was there any interest at the House level of actually going, doing a bigger project in the sense of a full replacement of the facility, not just a renovation? Because the 330 is actually a renovation, pulling out a burner and putting a burner back in. It's not changing the paradigm down there. The facility, the location, the technology, none of that. So is there any discussion around that?
There's no discussion that I'm aware of at this point. I know that I had asked the question early on that at 330, we're getting a replacement. How much would it be to have a essentially new facility, which would most likely use mass burn technology rather, so you eliminate processing trash beforehand? And the number was roughly doubled. It was about 650.
And also, I'm sorry, in that 330 number that you were talking about, I think one of your slides said that does, there's no surplus.
Right.
Yeah, there's no, you're building no capacity.
Right, to your point.
That's exactly right. In Connecticut, DEEP is regulating and is not permitting any new landfill facilities or any new trash-to-enter-y heat facilities beyond current capacity. They really do not want to have an excess in capacity to get rid of waste as a way of encouraging recycling.
I have two DEEP questions for you. Sorry, go ahead. Are you sure?
No, but you go ahead.
So DEEP, again, from your slides, the electricity. It's currently an open market?
It's currently being sold on the open market at wholesale pricing.
And what will hap, yes, you know my question.
Well, no, wholesale pricing being back under the Mid-Connecticut Project, there was a predetermined price that they were paying. And it was, it used to be a great price. It was like 9 to 11 cents per kilowatt hour. And now it's in the 3 to 4 range. And the forecast for the next five or six years is going to be very low electrical rates, or at least for the wholesale market. The long term is that the energy is going to become more valuable over time as some of the older power plants within the region start to shut down.
Okay. And right now, they're crediting, they're getting 19 cents? $19. $19 back in savings?
They lost them the $19.
So this was on their, on one of the slides?
Oh, okay. In other words, okay. What they did is they took the tip fee and broke down that $145 into where it came from. And with that, what they were saying is the very low electrical market right now is $19 of that $145 a ton. So in other words, if they got back to 12 cents a kilowatt hour, it would drop the tip fee by $19. Additionally, as part of this, is currently, MIRA has the ability to do excess generation during peak demand periods using the four jet engine generators that are going to be going offline in the next couple of years. And that's a resource which is not coming back online.
And that's?
That's due to environmental permitting.
Yes, that's a green energy. Would recycling become a liability? Right now, we don't get charged for recycling.
And in this and in all of MIRA's documentation, I would say their core belief is that they will never charge for recycling. It's going to be effectively built into that tip fee. But they do not want to charge for recycling because it's taking away from their core mission.
Sure. Go ahead.
So just going back to the capacity question. The, so if we spend $330 million, we are renovating the current facility. And I would think with some margin, with some updating of technology, we are hopefully getting a little bit of efficiency there for capacity. I would think that efficiency relates to some capacity.
They are, they are setting it, I think they use the value of 85% capacity, which has to do with hitting the current needs, but not necessarily building in any excess.
Okay. So let me, if we went to the, if we went to the 330 times 2, the 660, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So if we went to the 660 number, 660 project, would that enable such efficiency gains that you couldn't help but get excess capacity?
No, no. However, the project is.
The reason why I'm asking that question.
However, the project is going to be redeveloped. DEEP is not interested in issuing permits, which are going to allow for excess capacity.
Okay.
As I understand.
No matter what.
No matter what. So now, when, maybe you can answer this, or you can't. But when we've had to ship waste outside of the state, is that only because of the system being down? Or is it because we have hit the capacity, the operating capacity of the facility at that time?
Okay. Couple of things. When MIRA had to ship trash out of state last summer, when their facility went down, that was due only to the fact that the facility went down. Other than that, MIRA was not in the habit of shipping anything out of state. However, other towns and other communities do currently ship trash out of state. There are a number of communities, especially along the northern border, which to go into Massachusetts is really a shorter haul distance than going into Hartford. And that is something that's been going on. And that is something that's been going on for a number of years. There's also the ability for commercial waste, where a commercial hauler can pick up that waste and make a business decision on where it is most effective, cheapest for them to get rid of it, whether it's out of state or whether it is not out of state.
So I'm sure everybody's at home riveted, asking, why is he hung up on capacity tonight? My concern is that, that we get into it, we, with whomever, and if we're into this long-term, and although this revised response does give me more comfort around there not being such, such a need for 30-year contracts, but if we are in an inflexible contract or program or agreement with the facility, this town is facing expansion on all other service levels. We're putting up housing units, high-density housing units, that unless we make some changes, are not necessarily going to abate very soon. Those are leading to significant, or those are forcing, understandably so, significant investment in our educational system, in our school. They're going to affect our roads, they're going to affect our police departments, everything that is, our capacity needs to grow. And I wouldn't want to be in a position where our capacity for trash, waste can't grow with it as our town's needs, even though we try to become, hopefully, better stewards of our waste streams. It tells me we're going to be producing more trash. And I'd hate to be in a situation where we pay outside the structure, or forced to work outside the structure because we're bound to capacity constraints, and then we have to pay additional money because of the extra trash we're generating. So that, I hope, would be addressed somehow.
Yeah. And what I believe is that first and foremost, Simsbury is in a very fortunate position to be growing. So many of the other towns that are MIRA towns are not in that same position. So perhaps some of those people that are now or in the future are going to be living in Simsbury, are people coming from the other communities.
I don't know that anybody would agree with you there now that we're fortunate that the town's growing.
Just nothing on the bright side, we're talking about solid waste. The, there is some hard predictive models in terms of what's going to happen long-term with recycling. There's the Amazon effect, about how much more packaging we're all seeing in our house. So things do change. What I would say is that they, beyond the physical capacity, you have the capacity to run, run the plant more hours. And within the larger MIRA project, I think Simsbury is relatively small, and I'd be, I'd say I'd be fairly comfortable that they're going to be able to handle fluctuations appropriately.
When you say towns, that was my, another question. So currently, there's 51 towns?
That's correct.
What happens if they don't all commit to the new agreement?
Well, and that's exactly why they put out this statement of interest, because if they were only able to get, say, 20 towns that are willing to commit for the next 30 years, this is what we're going to do, they cannot build it. Just, just the same way that when we talked about a school, if we're looking to build a new high school, you're looking at a 20-year bond commitment at a minimum, and it's a large piece of infrastructure. You figure that this, this project is essentially two high schools at $330 million.
Sure.
Two nice high schools. So they, they need to have that commitment of trash, because the facility doesn't work without trash. Without the trash and having ample supplies of trash, they cannot generate the electricity they need. And they can't turn the plant on and turn the plant off. They need to be able to run at certain levels at all times. So they need to have that commitment, and I think if, if the results are there's not a commitment for something close to the current 50 towns, I think they're back to the drawing board.
Okay.
Whatever that may be, whether it's doing a large-scale transfer facility as a stop-gap measure, or whether it's looking at whether they could operate at a smaller footprint.
Okay. Can you remind me, what is our current contract up, like, we had a...
2027.
So, they can't, like...
When the facility stops operating in 2025, I think we're out.
Okay.
Yeah.
But between now and then, if the facility completely implodes, which could be tracked, we're going to be paying the same cost, but we're going to be trucking it out of state.
We are, we are going to end up paying a higher cost if the facility implodes. We are right now paying a tip fee based on net cost of operation. It's in the high 80s right now. When their facility went down two years ago, we ended up paying a supplemental fee for a period of time to help with that enormous cost, and at that time, they burned through all the reserves they have. So we lost...
Unintended.
Yeah.
So, we could be forced into this equation much sooner if this...
Exactly right.
Which is what they're, which is what the, sort of, the guilt card we're getting here.
Well, and this has been coming for a long time, and it's unfortunate that you are all put in this position, where you have a facility which is no longer reliable for such a critical piece of infrastructure for the region.
Yeah.
Wendy, did you have any other questions?
Um, no, I don't have any questions.
But Tom, the thing that I need help with tonight is that I think it's very important that Simsbury has a seat at the table over the next few months and longer, as these decisions are made. I'm personally very supportive of a regional project. It feels funny to me to make a formal motion to accept or reject those two bullets that we discussed. Is there a way to move forward by sharing with them a letter very similar to the one that's in the packet, and not even touching those two items? Or would it, I just don't want this to look like a slap in the face to them, and then they say, ah, we don't care what Simsbury thinks.
No, I would, I would suggest that it's simply a matter of authorizing Maria to issue a letter that outlines the thoughts that have been expressed here, which is, we appreciate the work that MIRA is doing, and we understand the need and importance for this. However, we don't feel we're in a position to answer these questions. Our concerns are, and we can outline them, and we can provide that very information.
So if I should, because I'm not, I'm not entirely comfortable, that's a negative connotation, but in light of this information, in light of some thought, I think that the letters, as, the letter, so I'm going to lead the witness. I'm going with the path of the letter, as far as which option is in the packet, but I think I'd like to have that letter revised somewhat with additional input, considering this, this commentary here in our discussion tonight. So does that mean that we would have to, what does that mean? If one would revise that optional letter as it's been presented?
This is a big decision, and since MIRA has let us know that that February 28th date is now somewhat of a soft date.
Yeah.
My suggestion would be, let, you know, Tom and I take another crack at the letter, we'll bring it back to you at your next meeting, just to make sure it's capturing and reflecting everything that you wanted to make sure was in there.
So it does need to come back to the...
I would advise, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I think based on our feedback, there may be some substantial changes to the letter, so, and it's nice to hear that this is not a drop-dead day, February 28th.
And then, we have, after going through the PowerPoint and some additional research, I have questions, so I can send them to you, and if any of them are not redundant, and they fit into the letter, as anybody else on the board can do, we could round it out.
I mean, we're all quickly becoming experts.
We are. It's pretty fascinating.
Yeah, so I did want to open up a conversation if there were specific thoughts about the letter.
As far as what goes in it?
Yeah.
Just, well, you've already captured, you know, any increase in performance of the, of the facility, would we benefit from that somewhere down the line? So I think that's key in there.
My, I've expressed somewhat some conversations, so, not to be grandstanding, but the, which it sounds like I am, but I, I think we, I would really like there to be a substantive thread to this, that we are very much in support of a regional project, or a regional solution, that we want to work together with our sister and brother towns in this area to solve our own waste. That's my personal preference. And that'd be something that really, Simsbury is at the forefront again of trying to touch upon this elusive unicorn of regionalization that nobody seems to be able to figure out. And that's important to me, number one. Number two, I think somewhat frustrating in that the, even, even, I don't want the $330 million bonding to be the silver bullet, in a sense, because I go back and I really had a negative sort of reaction to the initial, what's the name of the company, Wendy?
Saccharoni?
Yeah. So the initial cost proposal, and then the three months later, you know, this is what, you know, I feel like I was talking to one of my kids, and I was getting the negotiation upfront, and then I got the real negotiation at the back end, where the truth comes out. That really is very uncomfortable. So I really want them to, if it's almost to the point of the whole RFP process needs to be revisited.
Yeah.
Could I, could I just drill down a little? When you said you're strongly in support of regionalism on this, when you say that, are you looking regionalism as farming value, or are you looking at MIRA as being that regional entity?
I don't know if it's, I don't know if, if it's the name MIRA, or it's MIRA 2.0, and it's, I did, the, how broad it goes as far as the geography, it's not something I have a real, I have a real strong feeling about, but just the concept that we, I want to work together with our, the folks that are around us, rather than being somebody that just says, we're going to go on our own, and we have a straight line of trash out to some landfill in West Virginia. That's not me.
One, one other thing that was, we found out, is that Luke Bronin, mayor of Hartford, is not a fan of having this in Hartford. And as a suburb of Hartford who benefits from the draw of Hartford, you know, we kind of, you know, kind of take his interests to some degree.
I think if we were locating a trash facility today with modern-day economic development in mind, it might not be in its current location.
Yeah, it's like on the perfect, like, riverfront acreage, and, not that there's another option right now, but it's just another thing that's...
Yeah, that kind of goes back to the whole concept of, we seem to be barreling down because we have this, we have this imminent implosion on our hands. And we're just going to spend $330 million to renovate the kitchen when the whole house looks terrible, which is really what that product, the whole, that a whole facility looks like in the area. And I wonder if we couldn't be better stewards of the entire concept, not only the technology we use, the cost, the location, the partnership, rather than just trying to get this letter answered by a certain date. RFP is done by June, and a project started to, you know, next year to do the renovation. That, to me, is just not ideal.
Yeah, I know, I know that they'd even talked, and there's been so many meetings on this, about even, do they have to build a stop-gap measure? Is there the case that they spend, you know, again, these are substantial numbers, but do they build some level of transfer facility now that would require shipping out of state until they can get something built? Because again, one of their concerns is if they don't have support for the current Saccharoni proposal, MIRA's plan is to immediately go back and do their own RFP. But it'd be very compressed in terms of timeframe, and you hear the constant ticking of the plant behind you.
Yeah. When you were talking to some other towns, did anyone bring up the 30-year contract with no opt-out?
I don't think anybody's terribly comfortable with the no opt-out language, and it's also very vague how it's currently structured in terms of its cost of operation, but they're listing a tip fee, which is very different than in the past.
Okay.
The 100, the 30-year is probably not that ominous, maybe to myself, being that, you know, I live in the infrastructure world, things are going to last 30 to 50 years.
Sure.
There needs to be a level of long-term commitment. So it's not comfortable, but it's not the worst.
It's the no opt-out piece, cost of living, certain other things there?
I, I think the bigger thing is the fact that you're, you're putting the tip fee compared to the cost of living, where the cost of living is not directly the driver of the tip fee.
Correct.
It's not the right metric to be measuring that by.
No, that's...
And again, I think that would be a good thing for us to address in the letter.
Yes. So, option B. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess where my head is, is that my preference would be to really lead with the letter. You know, if we needed to, to sign on to one of these for three months, knowing we could opt out and would have a seat at the table, I would do that reluctantly, but it sounds like we don't have to, and I just want to confirm that.
That's exactly right.
Me too.
But I think everybody last meeting certainly didn't want to lose our ability to be at the table.
Yeah.
And they clarified that today.
Okay, good.
I think we can do a statement where we're not answering any questions that we don't want to answer, but it won't be a slap in the face, it'll be, listen, how do we work better to get this resolved?
And can we, just, I know we can do this, but bring in some other people over the next few months that are, you know, either rep from MIRA, or have our Clean Energy Task Force here, or something like that.
Well, I think, I think that the two experts that we would most likely be looking for is either Don Stein, who's currently the chair of the, of the MIRA board, or Tom Kirk, who's the executive director of MIRA. Both would be willing to come and speak to us.
Okay.
I think it may make more sense to see where we're at in May.
Yeah.
And have them, I would kind of, you know, save that silver bullet till we're looking at a real proposal.
Gotcha.
When I think we're going to have really hard questions, where exactly how did they come up with this final number? After, or how did they, how well did they address our comments?
Yeah, great.
Right.
Is it possible to get somebody who's not, not you, not me, not Maria, not Eric, not MIRA?
There, there are...
Who's got perspective on this?
There are consultants that we can bring in, there's national-level consultants.
Who are aware of our situation, possibly. Are there another town manager, another town engineer, or somebody else has looked at this as well, and this is, not that you're not the best.
Give it some thought.
I'm wondering if there's another, just another voice, not a contrarian voice, but just somebody else saying, hey, we're grappling with this as well. We see these as the relevant issues or concerns, or not concerns.
Well, I, I think one of the places to look is actually, just the same way as I know people have watched our SCTV of two weeks ago today. And myself, I actually watched John Adams, who used to be on the MIRA board, present to Granby. Because he's no longer on the MIRA board, but he was presenting to Granby, so it was very interesting, his take on it. And I think they, they, again, had a meeting last week, or they have one coming up, where they're talking about it for the second time.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I, it was in the back of my mind, is there might be a whole nother paradigm we're not even thinking about, whereas we're very much sort of thinking within the same box that we've been in?
Well, and I think we're, the tough decision, I know some of these other communities that are closer to borders are looking at doing out-of-state as an option. I do agree fully that I think we're better off not going out on our own. Other communities have done that, and those are the communities now that are getting hit with the big recycling fees. I think the one thing that MIRA has always done is kept us in line with our peer towns, and, and, good or bad, I think, you know, they have a good board that's aiming to do the right things. It's just unfortunately, there's not a lot of great choices out there right now.
Great. So do you think it's possible for our next meeting to have a letter that we could respond to?
Oh, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have the opportunity now to get an overview of the town manager's proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year.
It'll just take me a minute to get set up.
Okay. While she's doing that, just for the folks at home, brief word on the process. The Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen develop our, oh, come on in, Mike. Develop our budgets. The two boards develop their budgets separately. The Board of Education is about 75% of the taxes we pay, the other 25% is the budget we're considering tonight, so I wanted to put it in that context. And as you're watching, if there are any questions, if there's any feedback or thoughts, I encourage our residents to reach out to anyone who you see sitting up here with your feedback or questions.
Excellent. Great, thank you. Good evening. I am pleased to present to you our proposed budget for fiscal 2021. This is a presentation, high-level overview this evening of our operating, as well as our capital budgets. But before we dive in, I'd really like to thank a few of the staff members here, Amy and Melissa. They just did truly, again, just phenomenal work in helping to prepare the budget. I'm deeply appreciative to both of you for that work. And a couple of our key leadership team members, Chief Bolter, Tom Tippersky, and Orlando Cassiano, again, amazing analysis from these folks in particular, on both the operating budget, the capital budget, so thoughtful. Again, the analysis was just really terrific, so wanted to thank them and recognize them since they're here this evening. Great. So, the presentation this evening is very different from last year. The theme is, we have a lot of good news to share. I know that last fiscal year, what's it, technically for the current fiscal year we're sitting in, it was a very challenging budget year. It was really the first time at the budget that, as a team, Melissa, Amy, and I had a chance to really dig in. You might recall my first budget, I was only here for four weeks when the budget was due. So during budget development last year, we had uncovered many significant issues, you know, insolvency of several funds outside of the general fund, some pretty significant challenges with our debt modeling, our lack of cash for capital capacity, a number of accounts that were just significantly historically underbudgeted. Some pretty significant challenges with our debt modeling, our lack of cash for capital capacity. A number of accounts that were just significantly historically under budgeted. We made really good ground for the fiscal year that we're currently in. And again, just looking forward to sharing with you all the good, good news we have on the upcoming budget. So main objectives while I was developing the budget, one was to maintain our current programs and services. Second was to advance Board of Selectmen initiatives and priorities, particularly in the areas of economic development, professional development for staff. Parks and Recreation and Infrastructure. Third was to continue to maintain and invest in existing assets and infrastructure. So a continued focus on having cash for capital for our ongoing and routine capital needs. As well as building upon our recently introduced six year plan for smaller value capital needs. You may recall for what's now the current fiscal year, for the first time, we introduced a six year plan for those items that are under $250,000. Again, that's helping us to quantify what those baseline needs are. Previously, we were just always doing it in a one year snapshot. What we'll be talking about more later in the presentation when we get to capital is now that we have that plan, we're seeing on average, those smaller items that fall under CNR are about $2 million a year, actually. And we were previously budgeting $416,000 a year, so pretty, pretty big difference. The fourth budget objective was to strengthen our long term financial stability. So we wanted to make sure that we were maintaining or increasing our fund balance. That we wanted to maintain our health insurance fund reserve at or above 12 weeks of expected claims. So you recall, again, as we were doing budget development last year, we educated folks about the importance, since we are self insured. That a good best practice is to have a minimum of 12 weeks of expected claims, as much as 24. And again, unfortunately, due to the insolvency of the fund previously, we were heading into a position where we might not have cash flow to pay claims. When I think about where we were a year ago to where we've come, it's truly amazing in terms of how we reset premiums, how we restored fund balance. And in this budget, our estimates are that that fund balance for the health insurance reserve would be at about 24%, so just under that 25%. So really close, it's in a much better position, you know, much improved and and stable position. In regards to our long term financial stability, we also wanted to make sure that we are maintaining our commitment to funding our OPEB and pension liabilities. That was a significant cost driver for us during budget development, but we have included the actuarial determined contributions for the town pension plans. So this is just a high level general fund overview of town, budget, Board of Ed, debt service, et cetera, totaling a little over $103 million. Uh, this next slide for you, again, is just a high level overview of other major funds outside of the general fund. For our new board members, the residential rental property fund, we actually own about half a dozen housing units that are rented to low and moderate income individuals, families. So we take rent for those properties, the rent goes into this fund, and then as we need to make improvements to those properties, we have a source of revenue to to do those improvements. Our, again, our capital fund, the Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund, again, we did a lot of work over the last year. There was a series of, you know, staffing reductions, increasing fees, increasing general fund contribution. And when we present on Budget Workshop Day, we'll get more into this, but we have presented a budget to you for that particular revenue fund. That our estimate is is that we would finish with a slight balance to the fund as opposed to a deficit. So again, very good progress there. Water pollution control, again, for our new members, they are our one and only enterprise fund. So the fees that our sewer authority collects is sufficient to also sustain their capital investments in their capital infrastructure. So that is our one and and only enterprise fund. And then the last major fund there again is our health insurance fund, which is an internal service fund. So moving on to our general fund revenues, as you can see, about 90% of our anticipated revenues are from the property tax. Not unusual for Connecticut. It is, as we've mentioned in the past, a regressive form of taxation. However, in Connecticut, we as local governments, as municipalities, are incredibly limited into how we can diversify our revenue base. In many other states, that's not the case. I I often use the example of when I worked in Georgia. The local government had many options for diversifying the revenue base at the local level. They could vote to do a local option sales tax specifically to fund capital. They could do that to fund operating. They could levy fees. So for example, we had a fee that was attached to a cell phone bill every month that then funded all the 911. Infrastructure and the public safety sort of dispatch infrastructure. Unfortunately, again, in Connecticut, we just do not have the ability to do that, which therefore makes us incredibly reliant on the property tax. The intergovernmental revenue is primarily state revenue and mostly that is our education cost, cost sharing grant, ECS. And that's about 6% of our budget and the remainder of our revenues are local fees, grants, et cetera. So wanted to dive a little bit into our grant list and revenue budgeting assumptions that we used. This is just incredible news. I saw, I know that many of you probably saw some of the recent press on this. But our grant list increased 2.66% for the upcoming fiscal year, just under $65 million in value. For a non revaluation year, this is just, again, phenomenal, outstanding. Many of our area towns saw their new growth this year between about half a percent and 1%. This particular growth, new growth, will generate about $2.4 million in new revenue for us, and that's based on our current mill rate. Our real estate increased by about 1.46%. A couple of the large new projects contributing to that are the Anthology Assisted Living Facility, as well as the Ridge at Talcott Mountain. And our motor vehicle grand list increased by about 3.8%. And personal property increased by 29.4%. This, again, is due in large part to the Tobacco Valley Solar Project. About 85% of that project was in the ground for the October 1 date, which is what we use for the grand list. So that, again, the solar panels is largely personal property and that is largely attributed to the growth there. I do like to just remind you, the caveat is that these numbers are based on the most recent information that we have available at this time. We may get assessment appeals, so these numbers might change slightly, but it is the best information we have available at the moment. Other budgeting assumptions for the revenue, we used the tax collection rate of 98.5%. Historically, based on data that we have, we know that we'll collect about 99.5% for our tax collection rate. However, this is an assumption rate that the Board of Finance has used for some time. We did not adjust or change that. So again, we have used the assumption rate of 98.5% for budgeting our property tax revenues. The state cap of 45 mils on the motor vehicle tax does remain in place. The assumption for budgeting purposes was that motor vehicles would have the same mill rate as real estate and personal property for fiscal 2021. The governor has released his budget, so we utilize the governor's proposed budget for estimated state revenues. Most of our state revenues under his proposal remain flat except for ECS. And we received a very pleasant surprise that we, under his proposed budget, would be receiving about $190,000 additional dollars from the ECS grant, so an increase of about 3%. Moving on to the expenditures, as Eric mentioned in his introductory comments, as you know, the education budget is a very large percentage of our budget. Just on operating, it's about 70%. Board of Education capital expenditures are also part of our budget as well, so that's reflected under the capital budget. In terms of municipal services, they're on the right. We do try to break it down for you by function of government. And you can see, starting at the top with public safety and working your way around the right side of of that pie graph there. The various functions of government and the percentages of the general fund budget that are required to to fund those services. So this next table is, again, a high level overview for you of any major increases or decreases to larger functions of government. From current fiscal year to the proposed fiscal 2021 budget. For the Board of Education, at this point in time, we have used the superintendent's proposed budget. And working down to the very bottom, you can see that the overall budget is about a 2.4% increase. So key expenditure trends and budget drivers on the town budget. Debt service, that particular increase of about $550,000 is the largest budget driver for our second consecutive year. So when we talked last year a lot about the challenges with capital and trying to reduce our borrowing and paying for more items in cash. This is telling that story, right? When we looked at that graph and we said, we're going to be starved for cash and out years and sort of that debt service number is taking up a bigger and bigger chunk of that 7%. The fact that this is the second year in a row where this has been the largest budget driver helps sort of tell that, tell that story for us. The pension and OPEB increase is the actuarial recommended contribution. We work with Milliman, they are our actuaries, and this is the increase to the town pension plans. So general government employees as well as our police pension plan. This particular increase reflects approximately 45% of the town budget increase. So when we start talking about, again, budget drivers, Board of Finance guidance, what we should do with our long term liabilities, I would just really like for folks to keep that in mind, because that's a big number. That's, again, almost half of that 3.5% increase you saw on the previous slide for town government is attributed just to pension and OPEB liabilities. A couple of other key budget drivers around salaries. We are anticipating general wage increases for our unionized employees. We are negotiating with many of our union groups at the moment. What we have been doing to budget conservatively and responsibly is we follow, CCM puts out a data reporter on a monthly basis. They report on what's called negotiated settlement data. And so we are able to obtain good, reasonable sort of estimates of what we might be able to expect a general wage increase to be. So to be responsible, we've budgeted that within contingency. We also had to budget for step movement, and I wanted to highlight this because, as many of you are aware, we've had a lot of retirements over the last few years. And we already know of a number of planned retirements for the upcoming fiscal year. Our unionized workforce has what's called a step and grade system. I think that's quite a bit different, probably from a lot of private sector companies. But the way that our step system works is that employees move along a series of steps, usually on an annual basis. That's in addition to a general wage increase. So because we have more junior employees in the workforce who have not yet reached the maximum of their salary range, they're therefore eligible for step movement. So just that alone is close to an $80,000 increase. You might also recall about the minimum wage increase. We talked about that during last budget cycle as well as discussing legislative priorities. And the statutory requirement to increase the minimum wage across all of our departments is about a $44,000 impact. It does most significantly affect Parks and Recreation, but we do have some employees, for example, you know, at the library who are pages. Some of our seasonal workers, et cetera, who are impacted by this as well, but that's also a very large number that we have no control over. Other key expenditure trends, this is a decrease. As you may recall, the teachers retirement system contribution came up again last budget cycle. That was in the governor's proposed budget. From what we were hearing, it was actually gaining traction last time, but it didn't actually come to fruition. We had budgeted for it to be responsible, anticipating that that was going to come to fruition. It was not in the governor's proposed budget. We seem to keep hearing that it's dead, at least for the time being. So that is a $305,000 decrease to our budget. This next item, tree maintenance, $30,000 increase. This is for the Parks and Recreation budget. I do have a slide coming up about initiatives, Board of Selectmen initiatives and priorities, and I'll go over that in more detail under the Park and Rec slide. For police overtime, increase of $25,000. Again, you may recall from last budget season that based on our historical spend in that account, we were under budgeting by about $75,000, which is a very large sum. And that there seemed to be an interest in trying to build that up gradually over time as opposed to taking a hit all in one year. So we proposed doing $25,000 a year over a three year period. So this $25,000 would be year two of that three year period to build up that account to a more appropriate level, so we're not consistently overspending it. The health district assessment, we had, we were very fortunate and had the health district here recently to provide an update on their strategic plan. So the two most significant cost drivers for the health district assessment is that they are in year two of their implementation of their strategic plan. So they can better meet the 10 statutory requirements of what public health agencies are supposed to be providing. The second cost driver for us is the per capita formula. So the assessment is based on our population and because we are growing, we are also being charged the additional assessment for our additional residents. So that that's really the two reasons for the the increase there. The next item is an IT related item. We recently underwent a telephone system upgrade and with the increases in that contract, as well as copier replacements. We own a number of our copiers and hadn't previously been budgeting for replacements. That is largely attributable to that $11,000 increase. Another item, again, this is something that we don't have control over, but we have a better handle and understanding of our true water and sewer usage. At our various park and rec facilities, a recent example was, I believe it was sewer installed a meter at Memorial Pool. Yeah, and so now, now that we've had a true up, if you will, of what our true water and sewer usage is. We actually, again, based on actual costs, if we're budgeting appropriately, it's about a $10,000 increase amongst all the parks and recreation buildings. So a pretty substantial increase for us there. And lastly, again, I will touch on this when we get to the Park and Rec slide. We have increased the general fund contribution to the special revenue fund by $20,000. So I wanted to touch briefly with you about the Board of Finance guidance. So on an earlier slide, you saw that the town expenditures were up about 3.5%. And again, half of that was our actuarial determined pension and OPEB liability and the increase to that. If you add our expected salary obligations to that, minimum wage, step movement, general wage increase. We already exceed the Board of Finance guidance guidance by about $93,000. So you might recall, they issued sort of two forms of guidance this this year. One was that they wanted to see town expenditures not increase by more than 2.5%. And second, that they wanted to see the mill rate not increase by more than 2%. In order to reach their 2.5% expenditure target, we would have to further reduce the budget by about $235,000. I will add a caveat to all of this. The Board of Finance had asked staff to prepare some initial projections for tri board. And it was incredibly early in the budgeting process, but again, just kudos to Amy and the rest of our team. We had estimated that the town's fixed costs would be about 3.3% and it was about 3.5%. So to be that early in the budgeting process and to only have been about 0.2% off is just, again, well done. I think our forecasting was was pretty spot on. So again, just during Budget Workshop, I wanted to flag this for you. Ultimately, there is a desire, you know, to further decrease the budget, I will need some policy guidance from you all. But as we move forward in the presentation, I think you'll see that the mill rate is rather favorable. And again, during Budget Workshop Day, we can determine if there's a sort of a tolerance to to further reduce the municipal budget. So I also wanted to highlight for you that this budget proposal at this point in time does not include any service improvements. The reason for that is because, again, trying to work with the Board of Finance guidance, we were already about a percent over that. However, again, that being said, as we move further along and see the favorable mill rate for Budget Workshop, we flagged the discussion of four service improvements in particular. So I received many service improvement requests from our departments and I've prioritized the four service improvements that I think are most, we are most in need of. This first item, the contracted inspection services for assessment, would have about a $25,000 cost. What this would be is we would be able to send a contractor into the field to perform inspections on buildings, properties, et cetera, that had been renovated or rehabilitated. So we'll be able to capture that new growth in more real time as opposed to just every five years during revale. We estimate that doing that will generate about $60,000, I'm sorry, $65,000 in revenue. So the net increase to the town would actually be $40,000. We wouldn't, however, see that new revenue until the following fiscal year, but again, I think that's a proactive step to take. This really came to our attention. We have a new assessor, a lot of new ideas. She has, again, a lot of great suggestions for us. And again, we felt that this would be a really good investment that actually generates more revenue than it would cost. This next item, the Parks Facility Maintenance Technician Position. The Parks Department lost three staff positions during the 2000s. During that same time period, we expanded our open space parcels considerably. We expanded our trail network. So at a time when we were expanding our parks network and infrastructure, we greatly shrunk the staff. And again, we'll talk more about this on Budget Workshop Day, but the recent Parks and Open Space Master Plan actually said we are about two to three staff people short in terms of properly maintaining the infrastructure that we have, which comes back to the positions that we lost. So this is, again, a priority. I think that if we're able to add a position, that this would be one that I would. that this would be one that I would highly recommend. And again, we'll talk more about it in about two weeks. The next item, the Police Administration Reorganization. So this, again, I think is a very important position if we were to add a position. The Deputy Chief position would be a new position for us. So we would gain one sworn officer for the department. And part of this reorganization proposal would also be to upgrade the sergeant position to a lieutenant position. We think that there are a lot of efficiencies and improvements that would be gained by the administrative reorganization. So again, more to come on that on Budget Workshop Day. The fourth service improvement that I'm recommending, that we consider very seriously, is an increase in our funding for our library materials. So this is both digital and print. This would be the first of a two-year plan, initially being for adult, teen, and business materials, followed in a second year by children's materials. This particular account was hit very hard after the 2008 financial collapse. This would bring us just up to 2008 levels. So really, this is a reinstatement of resources. And again, Lisa has really great data on this particular issue, which we'll cover at Budget Workshop. So I did also just want to footnote, keeping in mind the Board of Finance guidance, if we were to include all of the noted service improvements that I just reviewed with you, that those service improvements would have an estimated tax impact of about $26 a year on a valued home, so just over $2 a month. And it would affect the mill rate by 0.1 mills. So moving on to Board of Selectmen initiatives. Under Economic Development, we have maintained funding for Main Street Partnership. They are budgeted within our existing Economic Development budget. Regarding the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, we've maintained our contribution to them as an outside agency and have also included membership dues in the Board of Selectmen budget. The third item is our Business Resource Library in position. This position does support our Business Resource Center, which is located at the library. It's a highly specialized position. As many of you know, it was vacant for quite some time. We finally found the right person. He relocated here from the Midwest. He's up and going and is just engaged with the EDC. He's really engaged with the business community. Again, has a lot of great ideas. So we're excited to really leverage his skills and his knowledge to help us further our economic development activities. Moving on to your initiative around professional development for staff. So this budget does provide funding for continuing education for our staff members so they can maintain various professional certifications. We have professional engineers, licensed clinical social workers, certified land use professionals in various land use fields. This budget provides for folks to, again, take the continuing ed classes that they need to maintain various certifications. This budget also includes professional development for our annual leadership retreat as well as professional development opportunities for our mid- and upper-level managers. We recently had our second annual leadership retreat. You'll recall this was an initiative of mine in my first year. And again, it's just a terrific time for that group of 25 to 30 people to get together, have professional development, do visioning. It's been very well received. So there is funding in this budget that would allow us to do our third annual retreat. This budget also includes funds for larger group work as well as individualized training. Some examples of larger group work we were able to do, this was a new piece to the budget this year. We did DISC assessments and DISC training on work styles for our library staff. We also did it for our planning and building staff. We also did a session on conflict management for our planning and building staff. So those are just some examples of the type of group training we weren't able to do previously, but we're now able to do with some of the small, you know, amount of funds that we have available for that. This budget includes funds for tuition reimbursement for our employees who are going back and either working towards an associate, the bachelor's, a master's degree in a relevant area. And this is new, and I'm really excited about this. So we were able to identify savings in our budget and reallocate that for executive coaching. So this budget has funds set aside that would allow for one executive coaching opportunity for one of our mid- or upper-level managers on an annual basis. So Parks and Recreation, in terms of a Selectmen initiative, the $30,000 increase to the tree budget, this is something I'm actually looking forward to chatting with you all about. This $30,000 increase would bring the budget to $40,000. We only have $10,000 budgeted right now for tree work in all of our open space parcels. And I know we've been hearing about the ash floor crisis through Public Works and our roadways. So in comparison, our Public Works budget for maintaining trees in our roadways has $55,000 a year. And we've embarked on a six-figure CNR plan, which is now underway, to help remediate the ash floor problem. We had not done that for Parks and Recreation. Orlando is constantly getting calls for service from folks who live, you know, up against open space parcels. A limb is down, a tree doesn't look so good. I just reported a bunch in my neighborhood on an open space parcel just from this past week. It's, we're getting the calls, and sometimes it's of an urgent nature. This additional $30,000 is really reactive work. It's not even to get ahead of the problem. This is just mostly reactive work, but it's our reality right now. So I believe very, very strongly that this is an appropriate increase for us to be able to properly do the tree work that we need to do on our open space parcels. We have increased the general fund contribution again this year, this time by $20,000 to help support the Park and Rec Special Revenue Fund. As you know, we've been trying to build up the town's contribution over time to better cover the community use and facilities expenditures that are currently being subsidized by the program users through their participant fees. And lastly, this point, I'm also incredibly excited about. So you may recall that the general fund has been supporting community programs for our other community services departments. That is the Social Services Department as well as the Library Department. However, we were providing absolutely no funding for our Park and Rec Department to provide community events and programs, things like movie nights, summer concerts. Tom has a great idea for an Easter egg hunt at the pack or another location. He's just got a lot of great innovative ideas, but he had absolutely no budget to work with, which is highly unusual. What we were able to do is we actually discovered an accounting issue, very small one, but funds, excuse me, that need to be moved from the general fund to the special revenue fund that were with the Social Services Department. So with the reallocation of those funds to the special revenue fund where they're more appropriately should be charged, it freed up about $5,000 for us. So again, this is not a new cost to the budget. It's simply reallocating those expenses to the Park and Rec Department. They will still be slightly behind the library and the senior center. This budget, they're even at about $10,400 a year in terms of the general fund contribution supporting the general programs. But it's a start, and I think it's a very important start so they can really fulfill their mission. Moving on to our capital budget revenues. So again, our capital budget, this is for our items that are typically in excess of $250,000 or a few items that the contribution may be less than that, such as our sidewalk program. It's $200,000 a year, but it's something that has a very, very long anticipated useful life. So what we have done where possible within the capital budget, I'm going to move to the next slide, is we have truly tried to only propose bonding for projects, again, that have a very long useful life or something very significant like a potential open space acquisition. So the projects that we've proposed, proposed to use bonding as the source of revenue, it's the radio system upgrade for our public safety radio system. Piggybacking off of that is also our public works system. Our ambulance use, our ambulance company uses that system as well as our Board of Education. We have set aside potential funds for a potential open space acquisition. I know that we have been discussing in executive session. We will be presenting to the Board of Selectmen tentatively in open session on March 23rd regarding that particular and potential acquisition. But we wanted, again, to be conservative in the event that that acquisition moves forward to appropriately budget funding for that acquisition. For the Board of Education, we have replacement of our high school stadium bleachers and press box. And for paving, it's partial funding. We really would have liked to have tried to get this down to zero, but it's about half of our paving costs. We're also proposing the use of general fund reserves. So something I'd like to share is that our bond rating agency has shared with us, and I believe we may have shared this with you last, last year, but they do prefer to see that use of reserve not for operating expenses and not for mill rate relief. What is looked upon more favorably is if we transfer funds out of the general fund reserve to other funds. So for example, when we did the $850,000 transfer to help shore up the health insurance reserve, that was looked upon more favorably than mill rate relief. Similarly, if we were to take and transfer funds out of the general fund reserve and into the capital fund to pay for capital projects in cash, again, looked upon more favorably. The general fund reserve does have capacity. And we're going to talk more about that when I get into fund balance in a few slides. But based on the general fund reserve having capacity, that this is, again, viewed more favorably than using those funds for operating expenditures. I have made that recommendation that we would use about $725,000 to offset capital expenses. This does reduce our borrowing, and it does provide us with more cash capacity in out years. Also, just one quick note here at the bottom. Paving, our funds for paving come from a multitude of sources. One of them is that we do have an operating budget transfer of about $200,000 that comes from the highway budget. So you might recall, it's a combination of bond funds, general fund money from the highway budget, LOCP, which is a state grant, Town Aid Road, which is a state grant, and some cash. So this is moving on to our expenditures for the capital fund. And projects that we've proposed for Public Works include our road pavement program, a plow truck, a very large piece of apparatus, repaving of our Public Works facility, it's the garage area, and storm drainage. If folks would like to take a tour of that, I would be happy to help arrange that. It's in really rough shape. I'm just going to be candid. It's in rough shape, and it's, it needs some help. So again, this would be to really properly pave, sort of grade the areas around the buildings, as well as to work on some drainage out of that facility. And the last item under Public Works is our sidewalk reconstruction at $200,000 a year. This would be our third year of the 20-year plan to fully rehabilitate our sidewalks as well as to bring all of our ADA ramps into compliance. Under General Government, we have the radio system that we discussed, the potential open space acquisition. And we are proposing a very modest contribution to the capital reserve of $50,000. So if you'll recall, we have also recommended building up our capital reserve when we can to help fund those baseline needs in the future, also for exigent circumstances. So for example, when we had the ice rink boiler recently go down. Oftentimes, those are issues we can't anticipate. And so to have a capital reserve where we could easily transfer funds to those emergency repairs is incredibly helpful, and we don't have that at this point in time. And lastly, for the capital fund, is a proposed contribution to our greenways. So this is our trail network, resurfacing the trails, fence repairs, tree work along the trails. And this is actually a transfer from an old project in the capital fund that we're proposing to fund this particular $135,000. So moving on to our CNR budget. The footnote here is that our CNR budget does not include the Board of Education's CNR budget. So that's a little different from the capital fund that you just saw, where town and Board of Ed expenditures are shown together. This is just, just the town. So for our revenues for the CNR fund, we are utilizing the traditional $416,250 five-year payback method, which is general fund cash. This also includes an additional $355,000, which would be a cash-for-capital contribution from the general fund. And it includes two operating budget transfers. One is from the highway budget for the Public Works truck. And the second is $141,000 from the operating budget from the police budget to purchase three replacement cruisers. Again, what I think that this is helping to tell the story when you get into Budget Workshop Day and you really look at that CNR plan and you see the $2 million of legitimate needs, you know, sort of year after year after year, you quickly realize that the old method of only allocating for 16 a year just isn't really helping us to adequately keep pace with the infrastructure and assets that we have that are, again, less than $250,000 in nature. So moving on to our expenditures for the CNR fund. For Public Works and Engineering, we have various drainage improvements allocated, $125,000. This is something we typically fund every other year, and these are townwide drainage improvements. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to continue to work on the ash floor tree mitigation issue along our roadways. This is different from open space. The Eno clock tower repairs, this is year two of funding that project. We have a trust fund that specifically provides for the care of Eno, and that is the funding source for this particular project. We have a replacement utility van for our facilities division. It's about a 2007 vehicle. Replacement snowplows, and we have also on here, it's replacement of a permanent truck lift with this portable truck lift. And Town Aid Road would be the funding source for that project. I'm just going to back up quickly, sorry, and revenues. I forgot to mention this, on CNR revenues. So recall what we also implemented for what's now the current fiscal year is we're now showing all sources of revenue for all capital projects and all CNR projects. In the past, the board would only see the general fund activity. But we felt it was very important for transparency, for proper accounting, to show you the true scope of our capital and CNR purchases, including these other sources of revenue that are going to happen during the upcoming year. So again, this would be year two of showing that. For Culture, Parks, and Recreation, we have a fairly long list here. But again, it's a lot of items that are smaller in dollar value, but important infrastructure, much of which has been as much beyond its useful life or in some cases outdated. Moving through the list, we have a replacement truck for our Parks Division. I believe that's a 2004 vehicle? Yeah, yeah, a lot of miles. We have grouped together three staining projects in the hope that grouping them together will ultimately obtain a better price. This is to take care of staining at the clubhouse, at the golf course, the Meadows Band Shell, as well as the Simsbury Farms Recreation Building. Again, we're beyond the point of what's a normal sort of useful life for the staining of that particular siding. It's really important for us to do this on a routine basis. Otherwise, a lot of the siding will start to rot, which then becomes a much more, you know, costly and a larger project for us. You'll recall that last year, so this would now be year two, that we are proposing to continually fund the replacement of our small-scale playscapes at $25,000 a year. So this is not Simsbury Farms, this is not Rotary Park. Those are very large playgrounds, very large cost to do a full refurbishment. But we have many smaller playscapes throughout town. You know, Wheaton Park has one. Again, there's just a number of them throughout town. And many of them, again, are at the end or well past their useful life. And the Parks and Open Space Master Plan has identified that as a need to either replace them or in some cases to just take them out entirely due to their age, et cetera. So again, this will be funding those, the replacement of small playscapes. There's also $10,000 allocated for a garage ventilation system. So the garage where our parks and golf maintainers and mechanics work. Again, my understanding, when the facility was built about 10 years ago, unfortunately, the ventilation system was not put in. So oftentimes, what they're doing is just leaving the garage bays open even in winter. For me, this is a high priority. I think this is, you know, a health and safety issue for our workforce and would rank this as a high priority for rectifying that. Our ice rink mechanicals, the control panel are dated. If you might recall, again, this was an item we brought up last year that we had three different pieces of equipment at the rink that were reaching the end of their useful life. The budget this year has funding for one. This would be the second piece. And in the out year, we have funding for that third piece of mechanical equipment proposed. This next item is a proposed feasibility study for the parking areas at the Performing Arts Center and Curtis Park. We often are concerned about the condition of those parking lots. Tonight, we heard from a member of the public about the concern around parking, available parking for our disabled patrons. We are concerned about that as well. The challenge we have with those particular two locations is they are very close to wetlands. So our options in terms of, you know, permanent solutions and surfaces that would be appropriate, we really need to get a good handle of what those options are and how much those options would cost. This study would provide us with that information so we can move forward with a capital project to refurb those two parking lots. At this point in time, additionally, there are also a significant drain from a maintenance perspective of our staff to maintain those dirt lots. perspective of our staff to maintain those dirt lots. The next item are park entrance signs, these would be replacements. Being very candid, our park entrance signs are mostly very old and are actually rotted, and they are literally falling apart. So this would provide for hopefully at least two park signs per year, and we could start replacing them and get those into better shape. And the last two are replacement fencing at the ice rink, as well as a greens mower replacement. That last one is funded through a golf course fee that patrons pay. Also for CNR, we have the police department, we have our three replacement patrol cruisers, which is our standard replacements schedule. We also are proposing to replace two of our patrol supervisor cruisers, that would be through the use of private duty funds. Our mobile data terminals in the cruisers are also due for replacement, as are the body armor or the bulletproof vests. That particular one is funded through an anticipated grant, as well as general fund. And then lastly, for police, we have the replacement of our digital fingerprint system. That particular piece of equipment is also well beyond its useful life. For general government, I am proposing that we move forward with an organization-wide compensation and classification study. My understanding is that as an organization, we have never done one, and some of the job descriptions we are working with are decades old, and it's really difficult when you're looking at pay equity amongst, you know, light groups of employees, to not have one of these studies done about every 10 to 15 years, that's what I would recommend is good practice for us. It makes our job in our HR world much, much more difficult when we don't have a good base classification and compensation system that we're working with. So again, my recommendation is we would start, let's do one, and then every 10 to 15 years, we would refresh that and do a full organization-wide assessment. In the off years, it's still important to do individual analysis as appropriate, perhaps a proposed reorganization, retirement, et cetera, but I really truly believe that there would be a lot of value for our organization in conducting that study. The next item is an IT item regarding network storage in our virtual environment. We have been setting aside funding on an annual basis for our next revaluation scheduled for 2022. We also have funds budgeted for a upgrade to our building department permitting software. So this is a very crucial piece of software for our planning and building departments. It, again, has reached the end of its useful life, we may ultimately end up switching vendors, but that is what that software is for. And then lastly, our dial-a-ride vans are coming due for replacement, and this for our funding source would be an anticipated grant, as well as our dial-a-ride fund. And the last projects in the CNR fund are sewer projects, which again are funded by the Enterprise Fund, project to do lining and root control in the sewer lines, as well as a sewer upgrade for Woodland Street and Hot Meadow Street. So you recall from last budget cycle, we did raise some concerns with our capital and our debt service budget model, and the current model does still have some challenges despite some of the good progress that we've made. The model that, you probably remember the line graph, right, the 7% line graph, that does not include our smaller baseline capital needs still. Again, I think we're really refining and getting to a good point of having that number quantified, but that model doesn't include that. And you'll also recall that the cash-for-capital and debt service, combining those two into the 7%, has really starved our cash-for-capital in out years. And what we want to do our best to try and avoid is creating a cycle of bonding, because that cycle of bonding does ultimately create more expense to the town in the long run. A couple of ways I recommend that we improve upon that still, is as I mentioned earlier, I think we need to continue to build upon our capital reserve with funds from capital project closeouts and year-end savings when available. That was something that we had recommended at year-end close, just this past year. Unfortunately, it was not moved into the capital reserve and rather placed into the general fund reserve. But again, I think that this is a very prudent and responsible way of building up our cash for capital. And again, I think we just need to continue to work on quantifying our baseline capital So moving on to fund balance. Based on the proposed budget, we have an anticipated fund balance contribution of just over $980,000. So this is that difference we talked about earlier in the evening between our anticipated tax collection rate of 99.5% and our budgeted tax collection rate of 98.5%. Our projected fund balance for year-end 1920 is 16.7%, and for 2021, the year-end projection there is 16.4%, and that's after the transfer from the general fund reserve to fund the capital budget that we had talked about earlier. Since the state's financial crisis occurred, bond rating agencies are now recommending that our fund balance be between 15% and 17% of general fund expenditures. What we've heard from our bond professionals in Connecticut is AAA-rated communities such as ourself, they're typically seeing it around 15%. So again, I feel that this is a very responsible place for us to be, you know, at about 16.5% at fiscal year-end. This, again, just shows the growth in our fund balance over the last decade or so. And now, I'm sure everybody has been waiting for, what is the impact on the mill rate? What is the impact on our taxpayers? And this is where that new growth revenue is just so phenomenal. So again, based on the manager's proposed budget and superintendent's proposed budget, and with our new revenues, the mill rate would only increase under this budget by .01 mils. So it's essentially a flat mill rate, it would go from 37.32 to 37.33. If you are living in a median-valued, single-family home here in Simsbury, that .01 mil rate increase would have the impact of a $3 increase for you for the entire fiscal year, or about 25 cents a month. So again, where do the tax dollars go? This is a really common question we get, so we've just broken it out for you a little differently here, but again, the largest piece of the pie does go to fund our education services here in town. And so in summary, highlights from this budget is that it funds current services and programs. We are investing in our existing infrastructure and assets, utilizing cash for capital where possible for our ongoing needs, and we are advancing Board of Selectmen initiatives that are important to you, such as economic development, infrastructure, parks and rec, and professional development for staff. Some suggested topics for further discussion during Budget Workshop, and I really view these as more policy discussions, are outside agency funding requests. We did receive requests from some agencies to increase their funding. In my proposed budget, I have level funded those requests in those budgets. The service improvements we talked about earlier. We'll talk about the pension and OPEB trust interest rate assumptions, the new mortality tables that were issued by actuaries, and our amortization period, which is quite aggressive at this point in time. So those, again, are all policy conversations, we have a lot of good information for you to share with you. Regarding the interest rate, you'll recall that there has been some interest from the Board of Finance of further reducing our interest rate assumption, getting down to 6.5%. We're currently at 6.75%. Regarding the mortality tables, for the first time ever, we now have mortality tables specifically for governmental employees. That's a first, and what those mortality tables are telling us is that governmental employees are actually living longer. So, in theory, that, if we change our assumption rates, could increase our liability. So again, these are, I think, really good things for us to talk about in terms of policy discussion. And the last item for policy discussion, again, is this possible use of fund balance to fund some of our ongoing and routine capital needs and cash this year. Some future areas of focus, as we're always working on budget, it is an ongoing sort of year-round process, we're going to continue to monitor state budget and intergovernmental revenue. We're going to keep focusing on our cash for capital, and we're going to work on completing a townwide facilities master plan. We're going to complete the work of the Park and Rec Special Revenue Fund workgroup. We recently initiated a project and want to complete our analyses of our LAP insurance and our pension contributions for funds that are outside of the general fund. And this last item, I'm, again, really excited about the work we've been doing and the analysis here, but evaluating the feasibility of implementing engineering permitting fees. Of the dozen or so benchmark towns we used, we are the only community not charging for engineering permitting fees. And so looking at that analysis, potential revenue that could be generated on a low to moderate to high end, and thinking about that as a way to fund contracted inspection services for utility work that impacts our infrastructure. So not adding a staff person, but contracting for those services. A couple of good examples would be the utility work that happened along prior town road last summer. That's important infrastructure to us, the road is ours. It was an outside utility company that was doing the work, digging everything up. We want to ensure that when they're doing that, that our infrastructure is protected and maintained properly. Similarly, there was some natural gas work along sort of Pine Glen, overlooked terrace, Old Metal Plain, similar concerns and issues. And so the thought here being is that if we were to charge a very low to modest permit fee for engineering work, we could then turn around to use those revenues to invest in contracted inspection services, which is also very common in other communities. So we have our Budget Workshop on March 7th. Board members are encouraged to flag items for further discussion and to ask questions if possible. If you have questions in advance of that day, please don't hesitate to send them to me. The earlier that Melissa, Amy, and I have them, the better we can more rapidly respond to your inquiries. And then we just have our key budget date. So a couple to keep in mind, your budget adoption is tentatively scheduled for March 9th. If we need another date, I would recommend a date later in that week. And Board of Selectmen presentation to the Board of Finance is scheduled for March 17th. Our anticipated budget referendum date at this point is May 19th. Those dates and times are subject to revision, but I think they're important to flag. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, thank you. And I want to echo Maria's comments at the beginning in thanking every member of staff who was part of putting this together, and I'm appreciative that, you know, as Maria said, that this year, we're not dealing with those structural items, and we're able to have legitimate, reasonable policy conversations about the items that, you know, Maria discussed. So I'm looking forward to those discussions on March 7th. Were there any immediate questions or thoughts that anyone wanted to share? Okay, well done, thank you, Maria. We have, under presentations, just a brief item, which is that the firm Bloom Shapiro completed an audit of the town's books from the 2018-2019 fiscal year. They issued an unmodified clean opinion. Any anything you wanted to add or share along those lines?
Just a couple highlights.
Yeah, super, that'd be great.
All right. So as Eric said, Bloom Shapiro performed our audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. We were issued an unmodified clean opinion, which is good news. Taking you through just some of the highlights of the general fund, and some of our larger funds, the general fund, capital projects, and internal service fund. Starting over on the revenue side, our revenues did come in excess of budget of about $571,000. There was actually way more than that, I'll take you through some of the larger items. Our building department fees came in in excess of budget of about $468,000 due to tobacco valley solar permits. We had insurance refunds of about $43,000. We had property taxes in excess of budget of about $887,000. We had an increase of our ECS grant, the Education Equalization Grant, of $626,000. We had some unanticipated school building grants of $83,000. We had an increase in our pilot payment of $33,000. And we had some unanticipated FEMA money of about $120,000. And then we had some unanticipated Board of Ed tuition revenue of about $43,000. So if you're just doing some quick math in your head, we're already way over the $571,000. And then in addition, we had another revenue for a bond issuance, we received a premium of 1.2 million. So with all of this excess revenue that exceeded about $2 million, we were able to close out some special revenue funds that were in a deficit position, we were able to fund the health insurance fund that was in an insolvent position, and then we were able to fund the loss in the Simsbury Farms fund to the tune of about $516,000. So with all of the ends and then some of the transfers that we were able to utilize the savings that we had, leads to the $571,000 in excess of budgetary estimates for revenues. Related to the budgetary expenditures, we came in at about $5,341,000 less than budget, and this is entirely related to the Board of Education. Our fund balance saw an increase in the general fund of about $315,000. There were some capital projects that were closed out from various capital funds that the transfer was made into the general fund, which gave us the surplus of $315,000. Our unassigned fund balance went from, oh, ended at 16.4 million, or 16.7%, as Maria previously stated. Also, she stated that the AAA-rated bond communities are about 15.5% of fund balance. So we were definitely more than where we need to be, we're a very healthy position. Moving on to the capital projects funds, we saw an increase in fund balance of about Our beginning fund balance for our capital projects was at a negative $650,000. So most of our larger capital projects, we bond for, but we only bond every other year, so that first year of our capital, we're basically fronting ourselves the money, we put ourselves in a negative position, and then we bond for it, and then we were able to increase our cash position. So with the bonding that we did for fiscal year 19, we were able to increase our position, and now we're at a fund balance of $6,133,000. The internal service fund, we had a net position increase from a negative $122,000 to 1.4 million. This was mainly related to a million-dollar transfer that was planned for during the fiscal year 19 budget, and then an additional $400,000 transfer at the end of fiscal year 19. The auditors did provide us some management comments, as they have in the past. One of the comments was related to our capital asset reporting. So for right now, we basically do our capital asset reporting on an Excel spreadsheet, and if you use Excel spreadsheets, you know how temperamental they can be at times, it's just not a very good, efficient way of reporting. So management has recently purchased a new accounting system, Munis, and our capital assets will be recorded in there starting October 2020 of this year. And so that will clear out that management comment, so you won't see it next year. They also recommend that we conduct a fraud risk assessment. This is included on the capital plan, so we are expected to do that in fiscal year 22, I believe. They are also recommending we come up with an accounting procedures manual. Since we are switching over to the new accounting system, Munis, that's all going to change, so we are going to do that after we do the official switch over to the Munis system, and then that comment will go away as well. And then they also recommended that we have positive pay. This is something where our current accounting system and the bank couldn't work together for some reason, I don't really understand all of the ins and outs, but again, under the new Munis system, we'll be able to implement positive pay, and then this will go away as well. In addition to evaluating our financial statements, they also do specific audits for federal and state funding. So both federal and state funding received unmodified clean opinions as well. Related to the state single audit, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. However, on the federal single audit, we did receive a significant deficiency that was identified. The federal government updated their purchasing guidelines related to the use of their fund, this happened last year. As part of this update, the federal government has required that their purchasing rules be included within the purchasing policies of the agencies that are receiving their federal funding. So basically, if it's their money, we need to follow their rules. Anyone that didn't update their policies is automatically getting a finding, this happened at many communities. And I just want to say, the town policy was updated, the finding is related to the Board of Education policy. I've since updated the Board of Education policy, it's ready to go to their policy committee in the spring, and so we shouldn't see this deficiency going forward. The risk associated with getting a significant deficiency is the impact on federal funding. We might not get the federal funding, but in speaking with the auditors, it's unlikely that this will happen, since the other communities have received the same deficiency and it is a quick fix. So as long as we can prove that we fixed it, there should be no issue. So as long as we can prove that we fixed it, there should be no issue. And that's all I have for highlights.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Moving on to the First Selectmen's report.
We're going to start the meeting?
Yeah. It's only two hours in. That's okay. We're getting there. This'll just be 20 minutes, so bear with me.
Oh, well.
In mid-March, homes across the country will begin receiving invitations to participate in the 2020 census. When that invitation arrives, surveys can be completed in three ways: online, by phone, or by mail. I encourage all households to complete the census, which determines, among other things, our representation in Congress and how hundreds of billions of dollars in federal funds will be distributed. There have been some reports of scams, especially targeting seniors, where people have claimed to be calling from the census. Please remember that no one from the census will ever ask for your social security number, credit card, or bank account number, or any money of any kind. The Board of Selectmen has several work groups, and I wanted to share some dates of upcoming meetings. There's one group that's working on an ordinance to regulate the market for short-term rentals. Their next meeting is March 9th at 8:00 a.m. The Wildlife Feeding Ordinance Work Group meets this Friday, February 28th at 8:00 a.m. And the work group that's looking at expanding the tax abatement for our volunteer firefighters and ambulance service personnel has a meeting scheduled March 18th and another one April 1st, both at 8:00 a.m. All meetings at Town Hall. Our school district is in the process of completing their facilities study to develop a longerage plan for managing the school buildings and a growing school age population. There is a public forum scheduled March 4th at 7:00 p.m., and that'll be held in the high school auditorium. I wanted to highlight some of the 350th anniversary events. You can see all of the events at simsberry350.com or learn also how to get involved if you want to volunteer. But the opening ceremony will be taking place at 2:00 p.m. on Sunday, May 17th, at First Church. It's an event that will be telling Simsbury's story and feature performing arts, history, and music. And it'll be followed by a giant birthday party at Hopbrook Landing, the new park next to the Flower Bridge. The event is free, but tickets are needed to attend the ceremony, and tickets will be available starting on April 15th. There's no ticket needed to attend the party. Also, after the opening ceremony, there will be River Day, which takes place June 27th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's an event for all ages, no admission fee. It'll encompass activities at the Sycamore, the Flower Bridge, and Curtis Park, food trucks, ice cream, face painting, DJ, and the opportunity also to rent some non-motorized watercraft. So that'll be fun. Again, simsberry350.com is where you can find all that information. Community for Care and the Simsbury Spirit Council invite you to join them for a panel discussion about implicit bias, how our unconscious beliefs shape our experiences. That's March 11th at 6:30 p.m. at the Simsbury Public Library. Also, welcome to two new businesses. There's a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Infused, a CBD marketplace. That'll be this Thursday, February 27th at 5:00 p.m. That's in the Holloway's Plaza. Also, a ribbon-cutting for Your CBD Store located at 1243 Hot Meadow Street. That's practically across the street, taking place March 19th at 5:00 p.m. Those are two separate establishments. Let me turn it over to Maria for the Town Manager's Report.
Great, thanks. I'm going to be incredibly brief on this. I wanted to flag for you all, in the event that a second evening is needed for you all to consider budget adoption, I would most likely recommend it's Wednesday, March 11th. Possible backup for that, Thursday, March 12th. I will just send out a calendar invite to you all, just to sort of hold that as a tentative fold. In some years, we've needed two nights; other times, we've only needed one night. And if one of those two dates is just really not good for somebody, just please let me know again if Wednesday or Thursday, if you have a strong preference that weekend, in the event that a second meeting is needed.
And that's it?
That's it.
Well done.
I knew my presentation was going to be long, so I...
Item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective February 24th, 2020, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $52,177.28 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item B is the designation of a code enforcement officer and wetlands officer. So the town charter gives the Board of Selectmen the authority to appoint these positions. And with the recent hiring of Thomas Hazel in the Planning Department, that hadn't occurred yet. Maria, anything you wanted to add on this item?
Sure. So you might recall, we did a similar designation over the summer. What's interesting is by statute, the land use agencies are actually required to make these designations of people. We have, for some unknown reason to me, a requirement in our charter that you also essentially affirm designating a code enforcement officer as well as a wetlands agent. So with the staff turnover, just to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, we just want to make sure that you all are also designating this individual as a code enforcement officer and as a person who's able to do wetlands.
Any questions? Okay. Is there a motion retroactive to February 10th, 2020, to designate Thomas Hazel as an Assistant Conservation Inland Wetlands Officer and as the Code Enforcement Officer? These designations shall remain in effect until rescinded or Mr. Hazel's separation from service, whichever comes first.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We've already covered item C. Item D is a proposed anti-harassment policy. With the support of the Personnel Subcommittee, staff has been working on such a policy that would protect town staff from harassment of all kinds, and it codifies the process for reporting possible harassment to town leadership and at times the Board of Selectmen. It's been reviewed by the Personnel Subcommittee and our Labor Attorney. Maria, is there anything you wanted to add on this item?
Sure. Thank you. I just really want to say thank you to the Personnel Subcommittee for working on this initiative with myself and my team from my office. It was something that my office identified as a need. We did not have a comprehensive anti-harassment policy. We had sort of a very dated prevention of sexual harassment policy. But we also did not have rules of behavior for patrons in many of our buildings, with the exception of the library. So this would extend not only from coworker to coworker, but it could be members of the public as well. So again, I think that it's really important that we have this tool available to us. I know, again, it was something that was just very important to myself and the Town Manager's Office team. So again, just very much want to say thank you to the Personnel Subcommittee for being open to this policy and helping us work through it.
Thank you for your work on that. Are there other questions or feedback?
Good idea.
Is there a motion effective February 24th, 2020, to adopt the anti-harassment policy as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So moving on to appointments. Item A, we have two appointments to the 350th Committee. Is there a motion effective the 24th of February, 2020, to appoint Nancy Grandin to replace Jean Sumner on the 350th Anniversary Committee and to convert the membership slot for the Simsbury Women's Club to a community member slot?
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And if the board is supportive, we would also increase the membership to an additional slot and appoint an additional member. Is there a motion effective February 24th, 2020, to increase the number of membership slots on the 350th Committee by one community member slot for a total of 19 members, and then further to appoint Joe Campaletta to the Simsbury 350th Committee?
I'll move that.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have some appointments to the Technology Task Force. So there was some discussion on this item at the Personnel Subcommittee. Our recommendation right now is to appoint the eight current members who want to be reappointed. We have a number of people who have expressed interest in being appointed to the Technology Task Force. It's a committee that we feel would benefit from more specific direction, and we've asked staff to, you know, assess their needs and any gaps and provide a recommendation on how best we can leverage this group of people. It's a group of people with deep experience, but again, they need the direction, and that has to come from us. So before knowing who else we should appoint, we thought we should first figure out, you know, what do we want them to work on, and then that could inform that decision. So just wanted to see if there were any questions on that recommendation.
Who are you moving to the personnel, back to the personnel?
Yeah.
For the overarching statement of mission and such?
I mean, I think that would ultimately come to this group, but...
But you're going to put forward a recommendation?
Yeah.
Right, Melissa and Rick, like, there's a group of us that are going to meet on...
Coming up soon.
Yeah. I was just going to ask. Yeah. And then we would present that here, is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then if we need people that are, fill their respective technology need, we could put that in as who we would want to volunteer.
Yeah. We've had some, you know, people with great resumes apply, but it's hard to know who to choose when you don't know where we're going as a group. So that's the thought.
So if I understand, what we're going to do is the group that we were just talking about will bring back a skill set that they're looking for, and then from a pool of people, we'll find out what skill set they have, and then select the right people. Is that correct?
More specifically, I asked, you know, Melissa and Maria to give some thought to how to best leverage the Technology Task Force, especially in light of the change in form of government and understanding where their gaps are and, you know, how to assist Rick. And then once we, once we know where we're going, then figure out who else, who else to appoint to the committee.
Do we need a security expert? Do we need a...
Yeah, the skill set.
Exactly.
But in the meantime, certainly reappoint the eight current members who have expressed interest in continuing.
So ultimately, it'll be an expansion of the size of the...
No, there's some members who opted not to be reappointed.
Okay, so they understand as well that the task, the existing task force is brought under the fact that they may be reconstituted, reshaped, reformed, whichever it may be.
They'll find out Monday night. Well, we meet Monday, so, right, next Monday?
Wendy, you're liaison to that group?
Yes, I am. So I can, we can discuss that there, too.
Yeah. No, my, I mean, my message to that, no, my message to them would be, I mean, it's such an oppressive group of people, and I just want to make sure we're making the best use of their time.
Yeah, I agree. And you don't need extra people there until you know what they're going to do. There's enough talent there right now.
So is there a motion effective February 24th, 2020, to reappoint the eight people in our packet with terms expiring December 6th of 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, there's currently a vacancy on the Hometown Heroes Selection Committee for a local business owner. After discussing with the committee at our last meeting, we wanted to recommend the appointment of Melissa Brett, who's the owner of Weldon Hardware. Is there a motion effective February 24th, 2020, to appoint Melissa Brett to the Hometown Heroes Committee representing the business community?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Eric, if I could describe the resignations for the Technology Task Force, if we could also just accept those?
Could I?
That's great. It was page two.
Yeah.
It's been a long night.
Is there a motion to accept the resignations for the Technology Task Force in our packet? And I want to name those people to thank them, and I'm not seeing it.
Larry DeShaka. Yeah.
Thank you. To accept the resignations of...
Larry DeShaka.
Thank you. Larry DeShaka, Mark Orenstein, and Jeremy Wallman as regular members of the Technology Task Force with our thanks.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry for the cluckiness there. Is there any feedback on the minutes from February 10th?
I had one where on page three, I was called Mr. Mack, so just like exchange. Mr. Mack's dude has...
It happens.
I know. It happened to someone else recently, so...
Anything else? All right, then we'll make that change. Are there any Selectmen reports?
I have a couple things.
Okay.
There's a task force meeting, the facilities, not the big open forum, but on the 26th this week. And people are allowed to come, but there's no public audience, so you can sit in, but you don't get to talk. We already said what the Board of Ed budget was. I think they're voting on it this week within the Board of Ed eternally.
Is it the speaking? The Board of Ed voting on the budget this week?
Okay.
Tomorrow, thank you.
I do want to just comment that the shared finance director between the town and the Board of Ed, at the Board of Ed meeting, Matt couldn't be happier. He was excited, and it's like the second time that they've said that, so I would call it out here.
Great.
The Henry James Construction is on schedule and on budget. And there was a presentation by a student who's doing that capstone program, I guess it's a trial run, and he came and he actually presented on how the cafeteria uses Styrofoam trays and that they're bad, and there's some potential contaminants getting on your food. So that's something we can pursue, looking at, the Board of Ed's brought that up, but the Styrofoam, not a good thing. And just another thing that we talked about a few months ago or a few meetings ago, that community choice aggregation. So John Hampton, our state rep, he is, has pushed some stuff out in the state legislature, and they are starting to look at it and address it on their Techno, Technology and Energy Committee. They haven't done any laws or anything like that, but they are looking at doing that. So I think that's all I have.
Great, please. Thanks, Wendy. Anybody else?
Culture Park Rec Meeting, Thursday night, 6:00 p.m. in this room. Hot stuff. Come on down. Great meeting.
All right.
Good energy.
Under, I'm sorry, any other reports? Did I miss anybody?
Thank you.
Okay. Under Communications, there was one item I wanted to get the board's feedback on. That was a memo that I wrote. Long story short, I've been approached by a number of companies that are interested in the town creating a legal path for them to be able to rent kayaks and canoes to people who want to use the Farmington River in our town. And that's going to take some staff time to apply for the necessary federal and state permits. And we wanted to make sure that this board was at least directionally supportive of that concept before staff spent their time doing that. So I wanted to get this group's feedback.
I had a question just on, so we, there's already like a canoe kayak group that I see on Riverside, that comes on Riverside Road. I don't know if they're, I've seen them. Is that not town land, or is that...
Okay. So in the past, we have had some tour operators that are actually illegally operating from town-owned facilities, and there has been a bit of an enforcement challenge. But as Eric indicated, you know, ideally, I think there would be some value in us sort of mapping out a timeline and the steps that we would need to do to help people find, again, a legal path forward for operating out of our parks and town-owned space. A couple of places in particular that we've had requests for are the Pincho Sycamore area, possibly the new Hopbrook Landing spot, as well as Curtis Park. In addition to potential federal and state permits, we would likely need to do some improvements to the embankments in that area if they were to be used for a commercial purpose, and also just revisiting our land use regulations to ensure that we could do that. So it wouldn't necessarily be an easy path forward, but one that might have a lot of value. And again, I think what Eric and I had discussed, the idea of before staff spends a lot of time and energy researching what it would take, just to make sure that directionally that the full board was supportive.
And the other question I had is just in general on insurance. If it's on our property, we have an operator there, what's our liability, or will we be liable if there's injuries?
Sure. So...
They have to carry their own.
Pardon me?
They have to carry their own.
Do you have to sign a waiver? Like, I mean, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So typically, when we have folks who are leasing from us, if you will, we're requiring proof of insurance, we're requiring insurance limits at an amount that our carrier is comfortable with. Oftentimes, we might require folks to list us as an additional insured, and there will be annual requirements to provide proof of coverage. It doesn't mean that somebody certainly can't sue us, they always could sue us, but again, that we would try to put, you know, protections in place to ensure that whomever the tour operator was, that they had sufficient coverage that we were comfortable with.
Okay. No, I think it would be fun to have that.
I'm very supportive of getting people on the Farmington River from decades ago when I was on the crew team. But I am very concerned, I know that some adjoining towns on the Farmington River has had, have had some very significant problems with operators, and I'll leave it at that. So I want to make sure the town doesn't open a can of worms. I know for a fact that the crew team has had a number of issues with people just kind of taking over their docks when they frankly don't have the right to, in my opinion.
Those operators in other towns, are they legal or illegal?
I'm not going to judge.
Okay.
They are operators, and I'll leave it at that in quotes.
There's one in particular who's been a repeat offender in multiple towns.
But the towns, I'm sure the Farmington Valley Cooperative can talk about that.
Yeah, I've had some conversations with folks in Avon, and there's one or two operators that they license for specific days of the week out of a specific location, and it sounds like they feel like it's working well for them.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what, I mean, I'm a hundred percent for it, and I think that if, because we're at the point where we could, we're investing in our river right now, and I think that the right operator can be a good steward of the river as well. And if we do it in a very controlled manner, we can do it right. It can only be, it can only have a potential upside, fear being that the, just making sure that whatever improvements we have to make don't, are covered by the long-term investment we get back from it, right? That's, that's the big, I think we could, we could, we could in a very controlled way, limited exposure, non-binding, for long-term contracts. We can remove ourselves from any sort of sticky situation.
We could opt out.
Yeah, opt out.
Opt out, yeah.
But I mean, why, we're investing in our river, why not, this is the next natural progression, to encourage people to see the river from that perspective.
Exactly. Jackie?
I agree, we have such an asset. My concern would be, we just put in improvements, we've made this a really wonderful place to be. We would need to have some control over what goes there.
Yeah.
That would be one thing. Who would be paying for any improvements that need to be done? FEMA approvals, Army Corps of Engineers?
A lot.
The town would be paying for those?
So again, I think that once we get a handle in terms of the various permits that would be needed, what potential costs we would be looking at, both for potential permitting as well as any improvements, once we get a good handle on that, you know, depending if it's a small sort of nominal investment to something that's much more costly, I think can really help shape and frame the discussion. And perhaps another thought I had is that if, again, depending on the amount of investment that's needed, you know, perhaps we ask whomever we license to chip in or pay a portion of that. You know, a good, for example, might be, I think, our golf restaurant lease. So for that restaurateur, they're responsible for certain, you know, improvements to the facility, and obviously, things like the external building we're maintaining, you know, we saw the staining of the siding tonight, as a for example, but that there are certain things that as the, that particular person leasing that property, they're responsible for some of the improvements. So depending on how much, I think that's sort of up for determination, but we would come with a recommendation.
You start, start small, I mean, one put in, one take out. I think you could probably, it's going to take some town resources, but work with various nonprofit organizations, whether it's a watershed or other outdoor enthusiast organization, promote this type of activity. There's, there should be some sort of partnership there, and then you can close it down if it doesn't work out. We're not looking to promote tubing and coolers and all that, we're looking to the education and, you know, responsible enjoyment of the waterway.
Yes.
Same thing, when we look into cost, I guess my question would be definitely to liability, insurance, but also if we have our town legal opinion on that, so we know what we're getting into. I think that's responsible as stewards, which we are, so before we open that up. And then probably finally, but maybe not least important, would be the neighbors. This was opened up, there was a conversation when we finished the landing, and when that was going to be developed, and the neighbors came out and spoke, so I think that they need to be considered.
That's a really good point. It's a very good suggestion. Thank you.
One other thing we want to make sure we go into it with our eyes open is, we control the town land, mostly, but the pitch and oak is state land, I believe. So we need to make sure of all of that, so, I believe so. I may be wrong. Just ask my wife, so...
Why are we seeking care of that?
They're closing the gate. They're closing the gate.
They'll put a toll on it, don't worry. So just make sure we go into it.
These are all extremely legitimate concerns, but the way I see it is that by creating a legal path for these companies to operate, it gives us the most leverage to make sure that they're operating safely as possible. So...
And, and congruous with how we want, how often, how we want the river to be used.
Exactly. Great. Okay, so Maria, is that helpful?
Yes, I'm sure so.
Okay, good. Is there a motion, oh, I'm sorry, is there anything else under Communication anyone wanted to raise? Only once? Twice?